There's a couple of other big ticket items that we prioritized.
It'd be great to see a list of what you sense as the most urgent, the most pressing of them.
All right, I'll do that.
Thank you. That's it.
So, the adjustments are fairly lengthy. I'm just gonna go through the highlights. Reallocation of funds among the Board of Trustees accounts. That's about $868. Reallocation to personal services, moving from police, planning for zoning to village contractual, to zoning ward and village clerk. Traffic control, this apparently was not, the expenses were not originally classified, so it moves from traffic control equipment to traffic control contractual. The next is to reallocate among fire department accounts with a 1% increase in protection services contract, so it moves from fire building repairs and heating to fire protection services, sirens and diesel. To reallocate among highway department, moving from highway street maintenance supplies to highway street maintenance electric and equipment repair. Next one, to reallocate among shared services accounts, including for village hall network upgrades and increased electricity, moving from shared services and streetlights to streetlight standstand, street lighting, village clerk website, budgets and other notices, and shared services, equipment, personal services, computer software and electric. To reallocate among the rec expenses for the hedge trimmer, moving from rec repairs and improvements to rec equipment. To reallocate among sidewalk accounts for work performed by staffed contractor, so moving from sidewalks maintenance and repair to sidewalks personal services. To reallocate among garbage recycling account, to move from garbage contractual and recycling personal services to garbage personal services and truck repair. Retirement accounts, to move from police retirement to state retirement. To reallocate funds to cover emergency tree removal, additional tree work for rec and closeout grant, so money has been moved from medical insurance, tree replacement parks and wrecks, improvement to pre-maint personal services, tree removal contractual, pre-maint maintenance contractual, and urban forestry. To reallocate for increased facility expenses over budget, to move from purification engineering to admin, computer support, purification of sludge removal, electricity, heating, lab analysis, maintenance and workers' comp. To cover changes in staffing compared to budget, moving from purification equipment repair to purification personal services and medical insurance. To reallocate to paid on principle on outstanding ban for older projects, moving from purification equipment, source of supply dam engineering and ban interest to ban principal. To reallocate for increased facility expenses over budget, to move from TND buildings and grounds to admin supplies, TND, electricity and telephone. To reallocate among insurance and benefits, to move from state retirement to unallocated insurance, workers' comp and medical insurance. To reallocate among interest accounts, moving from ban interest to serial bonds interest. So, with all of that, we're back to the beginning. So, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 46, 2021, which states that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Coltsburg hereby approves the following budget adjustments for the 2020-21 fiscal year.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Frank. Roll call.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
And Trustee Woods.
Yes. Thank you. Next is the Highway Department.
How you doing, folks? Let's see, for the month of July, we had 53.2 tons of garbage. We had 24.4 tons of recycling. So, for the month of July, we trimmed limbs, had two storm cleanup events, which involved heavy silt removal and two downed trees. We filled sinkholes on Northern and Fair Street caused by the heavy rains. We had one brush collection. We removed one dead animal. Had fire department onsite at the subway to hose out the heavy silt. We cleaned the roofs and drains of the main street bathrooms, both subways and at the village offices. We had multiple interviews to fill our vacancies. We rehired Bobby Newhall to drive just on Sundays only. We hired Doug Vogelsberg to fill in one of the full-time vacancies. He's been there about 10 days. He's really rolled up his sleeves and jumped right in. He's doing really well. We had Hatfield Brothers onsite to repair a faulty air canister on the 2003 International Garbage Truck. We had six new tires installed on the F350, the 2016 Ford. And Zero Turn had a new drive belt and PTO clutch installed. For the month of August, we are looking to catch up with painting, sidewalks and catch basins.
Bugsy, I had one complaint tonight. It's not against the village, but I'm sure the village will-
Just one?
It's a short one. I'm sure the village will receive complaints about it. And this is the Central Hudson trimming of the trees. And the complaint is that, of course, they butchered some trees, but more importantly, what I noticed on High Street, as we all know, there's real estate associated with Coles. And Central Hudson, obviously and very, very visibly, only trimmed that real estate that they are responsible for, which leaves the Verizon and Optimum lines literally weighing down on-
I've seen many locations like that.
The trees weighing down on the lines. So, if you're experiencing any problems with Verizon, I would recommend you give them a call, right up the street from here.
Right across, because when the men were cutting across the street, I asked them about the kettle that's running across and going into Phillips's house, which my tree is sort of leaning on. And he told me very clearly that wasn't his kettle.
Right. They don't do telephone. They only do electricity. So, for the village, I'm sure you'll get complaints, not our work.
Have we gotten any complaints from the school about the large pile of tree sitting on their property?
Nope.
Okay.
How's the tree advisory board taking a look at that to see what's wrong?
I spoke with Jen about the butchering of trees. She's looked into a few of them.
But not the one-
As far as the pile.
The tree, the tree that's still standing, which has the huge-
I have not spoken to her about that. I can speak to her tomorrow, because I gotta talk with her tomorrow anyway. I'm actually gonna go up to the State Highway Department and see the Highway Superintendent up there by the old Duchess Mall, which his name's Silvio, because I have a few choice worries with how he left. Everything just mashed on our sidewalk. It took me and the summer help kid almost nine hours to clear all that mess. The school stuff, I was gonna touch it for personal use, but I'm getting kind of old fat tired.
If you want it for yourself, I would think it is the Department of Transportation's job to get it removed, and that's between them and the school.
Okay, I'll talk to Silvio tomorrow.
So, the tree, was the tree on the right-of-way of the state, or is it on private property?
It's actually on private property.
It's a private property tree. They did what they had to do to clear the road. That big pile they brought down to the school property, everything else, they just smashed right into our sidewalk for a 40-foot length.
Yeah, I saw. So, the tree board wouldn't be looking at a private tree anyway?
If it's danger, if it's dangerous. I think we should.
Yeah, no, she has done that in the past with private trees. If it is a danger, she will look into it.
Excited by lightning, maybe anyone know?
I don't know. I wasn't aware of it until the following day, so I have no idea what happened to it. Was it wind or lightning?
It was wind and rain. And it was hollow at that point.
There was a big hollow when I was working that night. There was a big hollow in the middle where the branch was connected to the tree. It's been filling up with water for years. So, it just took a little bit of wind and finally the weight of the tree branched itself, snapped it.
And the branch was as big as another tree.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Bugsy.
You're welcome, folks.
See you goodnight.
See you goodnight. You're staying for the rest of the fun, right?
I'm just gonna be a heckler.
Hecklers go in the background.
You're up there.
All right. So, the reservoirs are a little bit higher than they were at this time last year. The system is, usage is down, almost 9% from what it was this time last year. All the monthly sanding was found in good standing. We're gonna be doing the hydrant flushing scheduled for the week of August 30 through September 3. Water service line replacements, we've got a couple of calls about the water leak that was on Wall Street. She has contracts from a plumber. I did speak to the plumber today. He is unfortunately being dragged out on the job that he currently is, which is why I'm taking him so long to actually get a date and get that repaired, but he's gonna give me a call tomorrow and give me a date on that, so hopefully that'll get rectified very soon. Badger endpoint upgrade, grant submitted. I did speak to Ken Dollinger from Badger, and he confirmed that the CDMA sunset date has been pushed back, so we do have until January 2023 to get those installed. But just like everything else, it may be delayed on our order of the 866, but currently, right now, they're still on schedule for early or late September, early October. The filter rehab project, still going back and forth with West Tech trying to finalize that. Catskill DEP project, they reached out to me yesterday. I'm gonna go and call back to see where it is, but according to the Pontefeuille Health Department, I spoke to him afterwards, they will be doing work around Foundry Brook in lieu of the shutdown that's scheduled to happen in October. That's gonna last 15 weeks, so I'll find out more information on that tomorrow. Moving on to wastewater.
Is there a date for the 9 Wall Street?
Not currently. I talked to, she has hired Pizzella to do the job, and I reached out to him today, but he is unfortunately getting dragged through a project that he started a week or two ago for the Village Buchanan, and they keep extending it. So, tomorrow, hopefully, he'll have another concrete data accident if he can get it done early next week, so that's what we're shooting for right now. Yep. Suicide of Things, the private waste water line had a four-inch cleanout installed and blacktop replaced on Friday, July 23. The residential sewer lateral that's in conjunction with the depression off Fair Street. Spoke to the resident as well today. He unfortunately is right now still looking at having the same plumber do the job, but he is still calling for other quotes, so that may change, but that's, and the works are getting done. The INI jetting and inspections, that's still to be scheduled. The blower generator building, getting the fourth wall installed. Mr. Downey here is taking it upon himself to reach out to three contractors to see about finishing that up, so I don't think we've gotten anything back from that yet.
I have my first quote, and it's probably gonna be my only quote. It was available today, but I was already home, so I didn't talk about that. I will get it tomorrow for you.
Not a problem. And as soon as my schedule and his schedule works up, we're going to try to replace the spray line at the water treatment plant.
Carl Street, does that include the manhole cover, which I seem to remember?
That was their original plan, but I guess they went out to engineering, and it was a little bit more than they anticipated for, so the cleanout will allow them to do further maintenance on it, more than they could before, but the roadway has been patched and everything is backed to the way it was with just an additional cleanout on it.
And it's their street, not ours.
Correct.
I had a question.
Yep.
Actually, when you first came aboard, we were talking about doing something there which was a slot to evolve off.
Correct.
And then we changed that?
Well, yeah, we're still applying that process. It's basically just a more efficient way of decanting out of the sludge holding tanks, so that kind of took place of getting the press that was originally specked out by PND. The press would have required hiring another guy, pretty much running the belt press 24/7, seven days a week to get what we're getting out now, and we'd still have the problem of removing the sludge after it's been dry.
So, 23,000 gallons of sludge is-
A month is pretty average, and it's within the budget that I came aboard with.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks.
How long before she goes?
Yeah, because you wanna hear-
What's that?
You wanna be involved in that.
No, I was gonna go take a quick drive down to Mayor's Park and see the pictures she's taken, just to, and come right back.
Okay.
All right?
Would you mind?
I don't mind, no.
I'll be right back.
Anything's a blessing.
Goodnight, everybody. Evening, everybody. It's nice to see everybody in person. I wasn't here last month. I hate Zoom. For the month of July, we had 66 numbers of calls. Gives us a year-to-date 396. We had an uptick in accidents. We had seven for the month. As the village gets more and more busy on the weekends, we tend to have more and more fentanyl vendors. There was no personal injuries. It was all just property damage with car-on-car backing up, side swipe, stuff like that.
Was this all in the lower, the lower village west of 30?
It's been all in the air, well, from probably, I wanna say, from Garden Street down to, from what I can recall, down to where the bathrooms are. I don't remember taking any down at Lower Manhattan or St. Drax. It's become a mid-issue again with the cars parking and waiting, pick up their chargers, getting off the train. So, when they're trying to back up, we have a massive amount of people coming out of the bathrooms on the weekends. I mean, I personally almost saw three people get hit, and when I pull up and I tell people you can't park there, the first thing I get is, well, I'm just, I'm not parked, I'm just walking to pick up somebody, and they're residents. I shouldn't say all. And I get into a little conversation with them, and they, it's like, you know, go to the stuff, go to the MTA station. When the train pulls in, you can come over the bridge, pick your charger as they get off, and go. I got people sitting there five, 10 minutes. I mean, the police car's trying to do an illegal U-turn down there, and we can't. And they look at you like, you know.
Are you kidding?
When I tell them to move. No, right now, I've been telling them to move. If there's somebody in the vehicle, I kinda give them that couple of minutes, couple of seconds to move, and they do, you know. So, but again, it's gonna, it's gonna get bad with more and more people walking across and people trying to do the backup, picking people up, somebody, somebody's gonna get hit.
I don't remember. What's the signage that's down there, so no stopping?
There's a bunch of, the two right on the sidewalk are no parking, period. The one that's on the, if you're facing up Main Street, it's no parking, no standing. I'd like to have it say no parking, no standing, no anything. At all, don't even try it. That would be nice.
No.
Exactly. Okay, with W said, that was the calls, 396 for the year. Summons is issued. We had 13 movement summonses issued and 55 parkers. For the month, it was a total of 68, and for the year, it's 370. There were no arrests for the month. We had the two officers that we hired start off on this month on their own. They've been doing pretty well from Monday to Sunday. John Martinez made his, it's not on July, it's because it happened in August. He made his first arrest for a vehicle speeding through the village. Pulled a vehicle over, the driver had suspended license three times from New York City. He seized the car, issued the summonses, car was taken, so he started right off on his, probably his third shift. A couple of things I wanna go over real quick. I'm not a big Facebook guy, but I'm hearing there was complaints about the wine fest that we had over the weekend. Normally, if I have enough officers, I assign one or two officers to do the traffic down at any, whether it be the wine fest, the Hobson Hudson, or whatever we have going down there. I am short officers. It's hard to get weekend coverage. I work Saturday. It was crowded on Saturday, but it wasn't crazy. I went, I made sure I was down there a lot while driving back and forth. I wasn't down there on Sunday. The officer on duty did not tell me he had any issues or problems that were major, but as I've been hearing on Facebook and everywhere else, that there's complaints of people going the wrong way, people parked illegally, officers not writing summonses at all, and I think one or two of them said the officers are selective on who they write summonses to. I wasn't gonna address that tonight, but I'm going to, because those are my guys, and no, we do not selectively issue summonses to people like that. If there's a violation, if it's up to the officer, if the driver is there, have, give them a warning, or tell them to move. If it's parked and there's nobody in the vehicle, they write the summons. There are some complaints that people made, or not in the village enforcement. That means they're out of the village, so we cannot write the summons on certain circumstances. So, and that seems to be, you know, we had the issues in the years past where they were parking all the way on 9D and stuff like that, and we talked to Highway Department in Phillips Town, they put up the no parking signs all the way down the low part of, or the northern part of Fair, so people wouldn't park. So, we work hand-in-hand with the sheriff's office. If it gets real, real crazy, my guys will call more for help. They'll write summonses. Last year, they actually told, though, I saw that, a lot of that on Facebook. That, what I had for that, we had one officer resign. He has not officially given me his letter of resignation, which was Scott Lombardo. I'm sure you guys knew about that already. He did not hand me a letter of resignation. He just told me, I forget, Jeff, Thursday, you remember the date? Yeah? Last Thursday in July?
Yeah.
27?
Yeah.
He just told me it wasn't working out for him, so he handed in everything. I got all his equipment, his badge, everything else.
How long have you been with us?
Six months. He moved on. He was, he was retired from the sheriff's office. He came to us, and then he's got another offer somewhere else where he thought it works out better for him.
The 29th.
29. So, so we got hired two, we lost one. So, I'm definitely still short, as I've sent an email out that, you know, the busy parts of the summer are coming, fall's right around the corner. I'd like to hire at least two, two more officers, if possible, as soon as I find qualified caveats, and move on with that. One other complaint I heard about, somebody stated that the officer, the parking officer, Nico, does not go anywhere but walk up and down on Main Street. That is out and out wrong. I was gonna say the L-word, but I don't know. Who even thought to put that on? That young man has been all over the village, and he'd written summonses all over the place. So, I just wanted to add that. He's a, he's really a great young man, and he does really good work on the weekends, and he takes a lot, he takes a lot of heat, right, in summonses that he does, for somebody who's not an act of law enforcement or anything. So, with that, is there any questions on the cameras?
Yeah.
Or you wanna wait?
No, my reaction is it's not worth the investment. It's a huge amount of-
It's a huge amount of money, and I understand. I'm just gonna do two caveats on this. I, it's up to you guys, because you guys do the budgeting. It would be my request for one of two, actually, two main reasons, is the transparency that people have been looking for. I know that most police departments are all gonna try to go to cameras if they can fit it in their budget. It's all budgetary. If we can get grant money this year, again, that's up to the, up to the budgeting, it'd be nice to get the grant money, at least to lower the cost of the cameras, because we don't know we're gonna get it next year. It's also good for officer's safety. On certain, certain situations, I've had people call me complaining at the officer, one or two of the officers, whichever it may be, were, had, they were discourteous. They were, you know, the way, the way it came out. I think having the body cams on, look at the body cam, look at it right away as soon as I get a complaint come in, let's look at the whole thing. Okay, it's not what the complaint states. You know, I just, it would be, it would be sad to see us lose the grant money, but again, if it's not enough to cover the budget, I understand. We went over, I went over a lot of the numbers with Michelle. I called Exxon. We were on a conference call with the representative for Exxon, and I think, believe Jeff had said that it was gonna be between 4,752 on the high end per year for a five-year contract. I understand that's a tremendous amount of money also for a flagged commitment. I will, if we don't, I'm still gonna research some other things out. If we don't prove the Exxon this year, or I shouldn't just say just Exxon, the cameras, I'm gonna look also into talking to the sheriff's office. They're, they're looking, I think, to go to cameras from what I understand, not this budget, maybe the next one. Maybe if we bought them all in bulk, a bulk order, they would get it cheaper. But the biggest thing with these cameras is the data retention. That's where they get you, because it's like, that's, it's almost like, you know, when Bugsy says, when he uses the one recyclable guy that's closest to the village, he tells you the price, the price. You wanna drive a hundred miles to try to get a, you know, cheaper price, you know, that's just the way to, the retention is the hardest part. And you gotta do the retention, I think staple is two years, but we gotta work with something like that, so.
Well, Matt, what would it take, what would be the number of people hours it would take daily or weekly to confirm that some of the water, make sure that the data has been downloaded, edit the data if that's necessary? How much time does that take?
Well, from what I understand, talking to the, talking to the representative of Exxon, I'm gonna be the only one to be able to do anything with the cameras, meaning the downloads and stuff like that. For what I do believe, it's almost like what the dash cams have with the sewer we have now. We have to drive up to the substation, basically, we put in a code, and the substation will take the downloads of the video, the dash cams we have, the two we have in the cars. They download it. It takes, depending how long the footage is, it may take anywhere from a minute to a half hour, depending how long the video is on it. So, I'd have to go over them with that, how long it would take for a download. I do believe, once you put it in, you take the camera off, my tour of duty was 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. My camera would come off, I put it into the, into the cradle, where it had the charges, it downloads through that automatically. The next officer that comes on on the 412 would take another, a different camera out, and they would use that, and we would rotate the four cameras through, through the department.
So, what you're saying is zero person hours?
I believe so. I believe that's how it definitely works, because it would be, you know, if you had 100 officers, all NYPD, it would be impossible to go through all of those cameras, and they all have cameras. I pretty much all think they almost have cameras now, so.
So, does some, do you, does the data get, is it raw data, or does it get flagged in a way so that if you needed to pull?
It'd be straight-up raw data, like, like almost dash cams are, and if something came in, again, we'd have to look at how long, how long we're gonna hold it, you know, whether it be 30, 60, 90 days, I'd have to look in something like that. And if there's no enforcement issues, there's no arrests, arrest would be different, you'd have to hold it on in some court. If it was just a regular day where nothing happened and the officer had no contact with any, you know, any person, then it wouldn't, it'd be nothing to it. You'd hold it for a month, and it would probably, you know, be caught over it. But if you're gonna tag it like we do now with dash cams, I tag it, when I pull somebody over, the dash cam gets activated. I go back to the car after I write the summons, a, a short little, it's not, list comes up, I tag it, you know, ticket number one, two, three, four, five. I can put in warning, if I gave a warning, or I can put in issued summons for, you know, speeding.
So, that, that part of the, of the tagging and data management happens by the officer on duty as they're working?
Correct, especially with the summonses of the dash cam.
So, they're already on the-
Right.
No, no, his answer was about dash cams.
Yeah, the body cams are totally different. You'd actually come in, you take it, you put that in the cradle, where it'll be recharged, and it would download any, any activity for that, that day.
How is it tagged?
I'd have to go heavily, I have to go talk to Exxon more with that, but I know it's tagged probably per day, per time. It was taken out at 8:00. It was replaced at, you know, 4:00 in the afternoon. It got downloaded, and it'd be Officer Marino, Officer Burke, and that would be put in that. You'd probably have to sign in with that camera to see who, what officer has that camera, so I'm sure, I'm sure they would have it all down on that.
But at some point, you have to tag the incident on the-
Yeah, later on, you would, you'd turn around and say, what was it? Was it an interaction with a, with a resident or a tourist or whatever, and they had a complaint? I would go and take a look at it, what time was it? And whatever time that frame was, I would go and take a look, tag it, hold it, and-
So, you've got eight hours?
Yep.
And you have an ability with the data management system to identify the time of day that the incident occurred?
Yep.
So, there's no need for you to sit there for eight hours?
No, no, I wouldn't wanna do that, absolutely not. It's the same thing with the cameras we have out, up front here. If somebody tells me, you know, looking at, you know, 2:00 in the morning, a car went by, I'll upstairs type in today's date. I'll run it from 1:00 in the morning until 3:00. I do one hour before, one hour after, we'll say, if somebody made a complaint, and see what, if the car went by at that time.
So, how many cameras do we need?
I, in a perfect world-
How many do you like, how many do we need?
In a perfect world, I'd like to have every officer have his, has his, or her's own camera, but I mean, four would fit in the budget. If one goes down, we'll still have three. You know, if we have a detail like sometimes we have for Community Day, I may have six officers out there, only four would have cameras, so that-
And the price, the 4,752, is that just to keep them running?
That would be maintenance, that would be any type of, yeah, service maintenance, stuff like that, from what she told me. Also, on the second and fifth year, we would be issued new cameras, any updated, any updates that were on it, meaning any data updates or anything else that come out with a new Any updated, any updates that were on it, meaning any data updates or anything else that come out with a new program, that would automatically be in the program, in the, in the contract, update that on the second and fifth year.
So is there a cost per camera?
It says forty, forty-two hundred for camera, licensing, supporting equipment warranty.
Yep.
And then fifty-two hundred per year for data.
We're trying to get that knocked down. We're trying to get the fifty-two down.
Forty-two hundred basically for the camera, for one year? For one camera for one year?
Correct.
So forty-two hundred-
Well, no, that covers all four cameras, that covers everything, the contract, that covers-
Four cameras for one year?
The whole thing, yep, correct.
But the killer is the data cost.
Yep, and there's really nowhere-
And if we purchase four this year, you have to purchase and license the four next year, and so.
Mm-hmm. So it's recurring. I didn't understand the purchase point to be recurring. I understood the data to be recurring. She said four cameras-
You have a cho, choice to lease or purchase.
Right. But the le, this is, the price she has here, I understood to be a purchase price. Maybe we need to clarify that with Michelle. So, four cameras, licensing, supporting equipment, warranty. And then, let's see, contract. So you'd get, under the contract, if you're leasing them, under the contract, the cameras would be replaced every thirty months, under the five-year contract?
Yeah, the second and fifth year.
Second and fifth year, which is what you just said.
So she says there are two options for the camera. The cheaper option, which is the forty-two hundred a year after the initial year. So the initial year is whatever-
The start of course, and everything like that, to go up and upstairs.
And it's forty-two hundred a year, is for flat-out buying four cameras.
Mm-hmm.
The second option, which adds thirteen hundred and fifty dollars per year, is to have an unlimited no questions asked warranty, with a guaranteed change out, two point five years into the contract. So you buy the cameras today, and get upgraded ones in thirty months. But that's the more expensive option.
Mm-hmm.
The camera itself is seven hundred dollars each.
Yeah, there was an additional charge in there that they wanted, that me and Michelle talked about. Originally it was like three hundred and fifty dollars, or if we went and actually got like, with your cell phone, if you took out the warrant, the insurance on it, and if it breaks, they would give you the new phone for whatever. We figured that the new, if we lost one camera a year and a half in, it's seven hundred bucks. It would have been cheap, it'd be cheaper just not to get that, that contract than to go buy the camera seven hundred, seven hundred dollars, to keep doing that for the next three years. There's a couple of things I'd really need to work out with Michelle on that, because we kind of did it the end of last week, so we were kind of running around a little bit. But the numbers are close to what she had put down. They said we're trying to get them down a little bit cheaper, because we do use Axon for tasers. So I was trying to get a group-type thing in there. They were also, we're going to throw in a free eight-hour training class for myself, and whoever was going to, you know, issue with the equipment. So, and they would come on-site, and they would go through everything. That was also going to be included.
More research is needed?
Yep.
Gotcha.
Again, but we're on a hard, I mean, for the grant, we're on a hard deadline of orchestration first.
Just as a note from the community survey that we did in the spring. Question thirteen was, if funding were available, what additional equipment or support would you like to see Cold Spring Police Department officers have, rank and order of importance? And body cameras, as a first choice, received forty-nine percent. Additional parking enforcement, thirty-seven. Street cameras, nineteen. Handheld license plate reader, four. Handheld ticket writer, four percent. So handheld, or, sorry, for body cameras, far away, we're chosen as first pick. Something to keep in mind, and I take your point, Larry, about officer's security and transparency for your office. And I want to recognize you for being an officer in charge, standing up and asking for cameras.
Anything to support my officers and their safety is, 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 I make it so.
What's the duplication of services between the dash cam and the body cam?
The dash cam only sees the front of the car?
I understand.
Okay, and, and the issue with those are, is it's limited. Because you're getting, if you're pulling a car over, you could be ten to fifteen feet away from the car. The camera will catch it. The cameras that we have are not the newest version of the dash cams, where they're, they're, they'll be not as clear of a picture as you would if you have it, have on the body cam. Body cam, if you're face-to-face exactly, if I was pulled somebody, we'd talk to them. So you're going to get the whole picture. And it's going to get the surrounding, I think it's one eighty degrees in front of you, if I'm not mistaken.
So delete the dash cams?
The dash cams ain't costing anything. The dash cam, the dash cams are free.
Except that you're gathering data and saving it, so.
At no cost.
That's different data.
No cost.
It's different data.
Where does the data go?
The data goes to the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office, who would, who would give me their old cameras for free, is taking the data and keeping that for us. We've had no cost on those cameras since the day I put them in.
Have you used them?
Yeah, of course.
I'm sorry, I know they're, they're mounted, but have you ever gone back to any of the data?
I, so far, we've never had a person challenge us in court, because that's what I would use it for. It was at the car stop, the vehicle stop, and they said, I want to see the camera, I want to see the data. I would go to the sheriff's office, only I can do that as a supervisor. I would pull the data, bring it to court as evidence, and I would submit it to the court.
I would think that the body cam would do that.
Yep. If it's not costing anything, I'd rather, if I can have both of them, I'll have both. I mean, it's, you know, it's not, that's not going to cost us anything, the dash cam. That's holding. And also with the dash cam, we have a camera that's in the back for any prisoners that we transport. It also takes a video of that goes also, in case anybody makes a complaint against my officer while they're driving them over to Putnam for, to, to the correctional facility.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just like to say, those are not interchangeable, a dash cam versus a body camera. That's two completely different sources of information. Secondly, I'd like to say that I also support very highly the fact that you are seeking to figure out ways to get money for these cameras, that you want them. I think that says a lot about our police department, about the way you run it. So, I support it one hundred percent, and, you know, it's the cost of doing business. So I, I think going through the vent is the right thing to do.
Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, I never started with this, I feel like I should, leave it with more pictures. So, I just wanted to say that we have some really nice new active members of the Recreation Commission, with Jeff Amato and Trevor Knight. And we've had several really good meetings discussing what gold and goals should be in the community. And so, I just want to say that the Recreation Commission would like to refocus and really spend a lot of time focusing on the goal, increasing the use of Mayor's Park for recreation. If you go down there, besides the geese, you know, there are people who play basketball down there. You know, I was down there one day last week, getting ready for one event or another, and there was someone at the pavilion, just two people, sitting there having lunch, you know. I also someone else I went another day, and someone was doing massages on the picnic table. You know, so, I mean, I think it's great. I mean, it's there, you get open the gate, you win, as long as there are no more than ten people, you can use it. Another day I went, and scouts were having their meeting, getting ready for their canoe trip out in Miami, and went someplace I would never want to go, but they're going there for a week. So we want to see that. In lieu of that, we could try that. We have been talking about a softball tournament this fall, but the plans have been put on hold, because the Commission really needs to work on upgrading the softball field area. It's really not in usable condition. So we wouldn't want to invite too many people to a tournament, because it would be a challenge. So we're working with local businesses to redo the field. And our members and volunteers will do the labor, we'll try to get some of the materials that cost from the business. Trevor Knight has been working on a survey to assess the interest of adults in sport activities. Once the survey's ready, we'll review, we'll send it to you guys, so you can look at it. It's just sort of like, would you be interested? We list a whole bunch of activities, from pickleball to, you know, softball, to whatever. Pickup, semi-league, or informal, kind of thing. But then we were concerned about insurance, covering the village insurance. So we did, the response with our insurance companies there, it's kind of vague in my report. But at our last meeting, I mean, we should also visit, talk to the village lawyer about, is there signage, or is there something? Because once they adjusted, she had his participants save a, sign a waiver. Well, that's really nice to say, but that means the Recreation Commission person needs to be there to do that. And we want this to be more universal. The basketball court, and it is in the top of the field. We're getting quotes for repair and resurfacing of the basketball court. There's a huge crack in the middle, all the way down the middle. The Commission will look at possible grants to assist with this. We just had missed, we talked about this, the state recreational parks grant was due July thirty-first, kind of thing. So, we know that there's money out there for some stuff, or what we could do, because this could be a big expense. Certainly not in our budget. I know I'm going to be taking you through some of the issues of our life.
No, it's great, it's great.
So, I think that that's a really good goal. I think it's great to have softball for the girls in town, a big sport this past spring, because it's something they could do. If the softball field at Mayor's Park was fixed, parents could take their children down there and practice and play. You know, it would be a great utilization. We'd have to advertise, if people just knew there's more stuff they could do down there. And the recreation shed, if you know, the Recreation Department has a shed. We replaced it a while ago. But it's definitely in need of a cleanup, so we can begin to put some things there that might be benefit for the activities on plan. So the Christmas decorations that used to hang over Main Street are in there. From me, Bugsy submitted an inventory a while ago about what's in there. We really, like, I think there's a golf cart? Is there a golf cart in there?
No, it's an electric car.
Electric car?
Donated to us by Ford, many years ago.
Yeah.
Does it work?
What's that?
Does it work?
It did at one point. I know it's kind of been underwater since, so.
Literally?
Yeah, literally. It was underwater for a while. That is something I have spoken with Michelle about, and also spoke with Dave. I will be going down there, inventorying everything, and putting everything on my list that I feel we have no use for down there. And we're going to try and get rid of it.
And the Commission members are very willing to help you with that. You want to have somebody with the inventory, or whatever, out getting rid of it? Or put it on Phillips Town Recycle, or put it out to sale?
There's certain rules and regulations you have to follow, which I will go through, Michelle, with that.
Okay.
As a municipality, we can't just put it up on Marketplace. If that was the case, I would have gotten rid of it.
Yeah, okay, well, let's get to that, I'll update the committee on that.
So is, were you waiting for a response on the inventory you submitted?
That was a couple of years ago.
So do we still have it?
Whether it exists over here, I do not have it, no. If, it's something I have to go back down and redo over.
So, so, when you send it out, copy everybody, so we know it's gone brown?
Same mistake twice.
So anyway, that would be really good, because then we'd have some space down there to do stuff. Because even today, someone on the Commission, I was eighteen, and we said, if we did have something that could, would, would be our space, we could keep stuff for people to, to, to do. So Mayor's Park Pavilion, the brush on trees. Now, this, I want to tell you this is a really funny story. So we're there with the cops, the boys' guys getting ready for their trip. One of the local, one of the people of the neighborhood was there also with his son. And he came over, he said, you see all this brush over here by the cove? Is there any way that that can, you know, be trimmed down? Because you can't see the cove anymore from Mayor's Park, from the pavilion. And it is a beautiful view. But then the next thing I know, Steve, the tractor service, and frankly, Phillips Town, the town of Phillips Town, with their, what is it called? What they brought down?
Their brush tractor. It has a hydraulic arm that cuts down pretty much anything that thick and smaller.
So, they came and they cleaned up. So now, from the pavilion, you have a beautiful view of the cove. But, something's fucked up. So Jen from the tree committee came to look down and look at the trees that were left there. Some of them are invasive mulberries, a couple of trees that she thought should stay. But they were way in the back, unbesieged anybody when we were doing the other lawn trees. Once all this brush came down, there were these two huge lawn trees. One is definitely dead and has to be knocked down. One might be prunable, but maybe not. And there were huge divots underneath that the brush clean up, you know. They didn't make them, but they were there when they did the brush. So, we're going to work with Jen on that. The committee are going to take down some of the invasive mulberries and actually put them, they're not very big, put that brush in front of the lawn trees. Because right now it's dangerous. We'd have to put something in front of there, or we have to fence around it, because it would be an issue. So, that's, it looks beautiful. It really does, from its view. This past weekend, we had the wine festival. So I have a little list of things. Bugsy covered Friday and Monday, you know, opening and closing for the different activities. I did Saturday and Sunday, opening and closing. And actually, my husband and I covered the rented parking at the Highway Department. When talking with the permitted, the permitted group, they said there was going to be about twenty, twenty-five cars for the Highway Department. They were forty. And we had to turn people, renters away. Too many, you know, it couldn't, there's a, Bugsy gave me great directions about how much space needed to be up open for the fire trucks to be able to pull in, for the trash to be able to pull in. So that, that was a little bit of a mess. The parking on Fair Street, Bugsy's already mentioned. She advertises this as an activity, rain or shine. We haven't had rain for a while. We're very wet in July. But the right outfield is very spongy, and that's where she put her food trucks, which were the heaviest things that came in. There was some, Bugsy will have to do some, would you say, trap soda when?
Probably not even, it's going to take me about twenty minutes with a plate tamper, just to go over the tire. It's one set of tire tracks that has sunk in. In your picture, it looks a little worse, because the grass is a little longer. Jack just cut it today.
Oh, okay.
Should only take me about twenty minutes with a plate tamper, just to smooth it all out, so it's not an ankle twisting.
But she does advertise that that, if it was happening rain or shine. If it was raining that day, or the previous day, or whatever, that might not be the same situation.
Well, that whole field is built on the old dump.
Yeah. So, that's a concern, the Recreation Commission has a concern about that. The time, the time preparing for the event, a bit of a challenge. We fence off the infield, because that's where the boys play baseball. So we don't want them on that area. So I don't know how much time that we spent putting up the snow fence.
Off the top of my head, between cleaning dead grass, weed whacking, trimming, cleaning out dugouts, snow fence, it's a couple hours between three of us.
Yep. Three people. So, I think that this is something the Commission really wants to revisit. We really question if it is in our best interest to continue to have ticket events at Mayor's Park with some of these long-term missions. The, I covered the closing, you know, on Saturday when we were closing, the person who had the permit didn't stay, but the last renters left. There were a couple of other issues. Yeah, I just, the porta-potties were coming down Main Street after Bugsy had already closed the gates. If I hadn't seen them, and turned around, and went down to Mayor's Park, I don't know what would have happened. He would, so, it's, there's a lot of planning, and we're trying to, like, you know, volunteers and, you know, workers, to take them to an event, it just takes a lot of planning. I really felt like a party planner this weekend, you know. I mean, I was there every morn, both mornings from seven until eleven, and then went back and waited till like afternoon. That's, you know, I did it, because I put myself on duty, other, other Commission members would have outdone us. So, Steve Etta did an event, a community person's event, you know, the week before. Someone will have to cover any Saturday events, because we don't have extra people, you know, abilities to maintain them. So I think we really need to revisit whether we want to have ticket events. And I think at our next Commission meeting, we will come up with a suggestion and forward it to you. We're just-
So, Ruth Ann, the Commission is going to take your comments and make a recommendation at some point?
Yes.
To the board? As to what to do about large events at Mayor's Park, is that right?
Yep.
Great.
See, I, we haven't met since Saturday, so they aren't aware of all the other stuff that happened. So, prior to this, it was something we were considering recommending. Now, I think when I go back to the Commission, we'll tell them that this past weekend was like, I think we'll come up with a statement, a more firm statement, and then we can move on. Okay?
Thank you.
Trustee liaison, as we're getting working on this, like, the survey and more events and talking with the lawyer, Dr. Insurance Person. Someone from the trustee who's willing to work with us on this more consistently would be really helpful. I don't wanna, I don't wanna send emails out to everybody and say, we're gonna answer this. So can you have a discussion if we can work with that, that would be.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Approved events, I just want to let you know that there are two new events to go through before you. And that is the Puparo Party on August twenty-eighth from nine-thirty in the morning to seven-thirty at night. And they would have about twenty attendees. And then the Hub on Stone Street, I don't remember the name, I'm sorry. They like to use the bandstand on August twenty-first for the luminary. It's, it's for drug overdose awareness. And they would be from six-thirty to eight-thirty at the bandstand, the twenty attendees. Do you have any questions on those events?
photographs of that event. In the past, it seems like there've been many more than twenty people. I think it's a great event and I hope that they go ahead and do it. But just, I don't think that attendance is probably low.
That's what they put on their application. And the luminary, I double-checked, and the luminaries are not lit, they're not flames. They're the little candles, the little electric candles. They're not flames because that would be.
Setting the bandstand on fire?
No, we don't want to set the bandstand on fire. Bugsy would not like it if he said, we just had it painted. We don't.
So you have a little event that was planned.
So the Puparo Party, is it Mayor's Park?
Pardon me?
The Puparo Party.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it's Mayor's Park.
Because you have something.
It's the pavilion.
Awesome.
If these get approved for a event, just shoot me some information out so I can add. Do I have information on these already or are these?
No, these, I just got them last week. They were giving.
Okay. So if you get approval, just shoot me information and let me know what you need.
So working really has to be Bugsy informed to keep the police informed. So that everybody is, knows well ahead of time so we can schedule people to come into the challenge. Okay, so is that okay to move forward with those events?
Would it be helpful to have Ruth Ann here for a discussion of item fifteen?
Oh, yeah, I'm staying.
Oh, you're gonna stay? Thanks for the time.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks, you all. I'd like to see you once, too.
How would you like folks?
Thanks for the plan, folks. Planning Board report. So the report is new business at Forty Main Street. It's a change of mayor's use. Site plan approval is permitted, is required to go from retail to retail office. And the use in the parking chart, forty parking spaces will be required. This is significantly larger than anything that has been recommended by the planning board in the past. That is going to talk with our attorney to find out what options we have on this. Clearly, there are enough forty spaces on Main Street to accommodate required comments. So this is just an FYI. Okay, the ZBA had no meetings in July. H D R B, no one here from the H D R B. So in July, the H D R B met twice. They reviewed and approved adjustments to previously. Approved design for windows and stoop on Eleven Card Street. Approved a shop sign at ninety-nine to one-hundred-and-one Main Street. Approved some entryway modifications, entryway adjustment at Forty Main Street. We approved the design plan for Inferna Street. We approved modifications to the guest house at sixteen Fulton Avenue. Conducted a public care and burnage garage at Seventeen Marion Avenue. And that project was approved, the owner of sixty-eight Main Street. Split their application into two parts. We approved their replacement windows on the side rear and basement facades. And they will return later to discuss the plan for the four windows on the primary facade. We met with the owners of Three High Street to discuss replacing the windows, but then we withdrawn them. We met twice in workshop with the owners of Seventeen Carson Street about proposed addition to the front facade of the house. That conversation is ongoing. In August, so far, we have not received any new applications to review. But we expect some to come in before the second meeting at the end of the month. Board notes, now that we are again meeting in person, our meeting starts at seven, starts at seven-thirty to accommodate the schedules of our board members. We thank the trustees for their suggestions on our memo to Gaila and Serena regarding the all-in-all. The tree advisory board. The tree advisory board was on plan break during the month of July. Did not hold any monthly meetings, but miscellaneous updates. We are currently assisting Mayor Miranda. On the village board, led tree planting, getting conjunction with the plant community day dedication to COVID frontline workers and first responders. We responded to a request by the recreation commission to identify and advise on a dozen or so young volunteer trees uncovered during brush clearing at Mayor's Park. Several invasive white mulberries were tied for removal. But we advised to keep two desirable trees, one American elm and one box elder. It was noted that one large boulder close to the water in T A Rightaway is in the latter stages of decline. And if it's on, if it is on village property, should be removed or at least corded off until funds can be found for removal. Thank you to Ruth Ann and the other tree force, and the other recommission members for their willingness to work together with the tree advisory board on tree care in the village. Finally, we are in the process of responding to a complaint regarding tree wire conflict in front of a residence at Twenty Morris Avenue. Town of Phillips Town.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, the third one's been up the fiscal road, lady, the old highway building. Garage has been taken down. We're in the process of building a new one. We did have one incident down there when they replaced, after we took the fuel tanks out in the ground. We had a lot of dirt that was contaminated, so it's called dirty dirt, anyway. So that, that, we're in the process of remediating that. And I talked to Carl right before I came here tonight. They do have all the dirt contaminated, they're out of the hole and so forth like that. So we can now start the process of filling it in. Got to use item four, you gotta be, gotta make sure it's good fill and so forth like that. So we're probably gonna start that tomorrow or next day, bringing that in. We passed the bomb resolution for three-point-five million dollars. As you know, I, for the last month, we did apply for a grant with the, with infrastructure from the United States infrastructure. But there's no guarantee we're gonna get it. It does sound promising, but we, we know we're not gonna get three-point-five million dollars for the whole thing. So just in case, we pass that bomb resolution as well. We also passed a resolution for five-hundred dollars to donate to Village Gold Spring for the community day. What day in September is that?
September fourth.
September fourth, okay, thank you. We are renting a double-wide trailer at the Highway Department right now because the men have, in the morning, have no place to go. They'll show up, there's not a garage there anymore. So we have a double-wide trailer up there so they can get, get ready for the day's work. And also during the winter months when it's cloudy and easy place to go and get warmed up every now and take a break. So that will be up there until the new garage is completed. We don't know exactly when the new garage is completed. It's definitely not gonna be before winter. But it's gonna be probably early spring, late, late, early to late spring it should be completed. We also passed a resolution for trying to support, trying to get Putnam County to share the sales tax. Not all of the sales tax. The plan is if we projected this year, they get fifty-eight million dollars and next year they get sixty-two million dollars. We're just trying to get a share of that three million dollars. I understand Nelsonville's doing the same thing. I don't know if you are, but the more people, more municipalities do it, the better chance we can have. Because we've been fighting this for a very long time, and everyone knows. Unfortunately, we don't get any tax relief for, if you don't get anything. So hopefully this will open the eyes a little bit. I know last year, all the supervisors got together, went over to Putnam County, and it was just like, fell on completely deaf there, but they didn't even want to hear nothing. They listened, but really didn't listen. So we're not doing anything for that. Like I said, all the town board members are now meeting in person, the zoning board, planning board, and so forth like that. There will be no zoning or planning board meetings in the month of August. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ruth Ann.
Hi, it's Kathleen.
Yep. Cold Spring Fire Monthly Report. Fifteen calls for July. One tree unwires burning, two elevator calls, five activated fire alarms, one EMS assist, one breakneck incident, two motor vehicle accidents, two public assists. So one of them was, Bugsy's, Bugsy bombed. One of them was helping to clean out the underpass after the storm, when it filled with water. Helping to pump and clear out. And one outside smoke investigation. Tom Marigan, captain, is that the right title for him? Captain?
Chief.
Chief, Chief Marigan, sorry, thank you. Chief Marigan applied for a grant to get, to buy boots to be worn in brush fires and mountain rescues. It's a fifty-fifty grant. The fire company spends fifteen hundred and they get fifteen hundred from New York State P E C. And they were given that grant and will be able to buy five new pairs of forestry boots. Couple of quick things, I just wanted to recognize and say thank you to the members of the company who ran the Junior Fire Academy. It was a success. They had to cut back a bit this year because of COVID. They normally have fifty-five kids, they have thirty this year. But saying thank you to company members, Lillian Moser, Danny Valentine, Jeff Amato Jr., Steve Etta, Will Etta, John Basely, Matt Steltz. And also thank you to Putnam Valley, excuse me, Putnam Volunteer Ambulance Corps, North Highlands Fire Department, Garrison Fire Department for helping with the academy as well.
I think it was both Dan Valentine.
Big Dan Valentine and Little Dan Valentine, younger Dan Valentine.
Okay, Larry's question, this elevator keeps on going on at the station, is it the new one they fixed or?
That's the new one. And they actually shut, they shut down for approximately a week. They're gonna re, they're gonna re-put the guts on it and they're gonna redo it. Also, to let everybody know if they don't know already, next week, the entire MTA lot will be closed. So I'm expecting a quarantine nightmare from Monday to Friday. And we will deal with it accordingly as best we can. Yeah, I know.
What are they doing, the resurfacing of it?
Yeah, the resurfacing, everything. I don't, I think they're just, they're yet doing the resurfacing during the lines over again.
Has to be done.
Yeah.
Okay, Justice Court report, fines, forfeited bills, and civil penalties. Fifteen hundred and eighty dollars, parking tickets, nineteen hundred dollars, civil fees zero. Mandatory state surcharges, one hundred, one thousand one hundred and eleven dollars. And a check was submitted. Karen Jackson. Karen, do you want, do you want us to tell us about what you would like?
My husband's retiring from the Sheriff's Department, retired in July. The Sheriff's Department, we're having a retirement party down at the park. And we have family coming up from all different places and friends coming in from Rockaway, the city. And it's not starting until four because the big bulk of our party is, the Landolphy family, and they're all on vacation. So we're starting the party at four. And so we want to just be able to stay peacefully, I promise, all time, and sit in the park past nine o'clock. That's all. We have the tent up and whatever leftover food is there, just to sit and have a place that everybody can still hang out. Just because we're starting, so like, that's all, just an hour or two.
And the, the, the issue is that the park closes at nine o'clock.
Right, and I understand the gate's gonna be closed. We don't need the gate ones, the tent and everything, you have all our stuff in there? We're not, we're not concerned about the big gate being open. We'll come back, we're gonna come back in the morning on Sunday and gather up any coolers and leftover stuff we have. Long as people steal it. That, that was our only concern. I know, I understand the bathrooms, someone has to come lock the bathrooms, that, that's a big deal. So if someone comes down and locks the bathrooms and we can't use them, then we can't use them. Or we can just leave them propped open a little bit and I'll close them when we leave. That's up to you guys, but just need, just want a little extra time.
And you also have amplified sound. Your application also indicates it's gonna have amplified sound.
My application, is that? For what? I don't have any amplified sound.
You're not gonna have music?
Someone may have one of their little speakers that goes to their phone. I wasn't planning on putting a band or anything crazy in there.
It did say, yeah, because we looked at it, it did say amplified sound.
It said amplified sound? I'll have to look at, I don't have.
It amplified sound because we were discussing having the occasion.
Yeah, no, I, I think the only thing we want to bring in is, is our friend's little speaker that Bluetooths to your phone and they play music off of it. There's no band or big giant boom speakers or anything crazy.
It says right here, amplified sound, and you check yes.
Well, I guess just because it's a little speaker, that's, yeah, we don't have a big speaker, we don't have anything.
Or, or.
Could you offer to turn off the music at nine?
Yes, at nine o'clock, that'll be the end of it. I'll shut it off, I'll discontinue it, if that's the decision that needs to be made.
So Ruth Ann.
I, I'm, it sets a precedent.
Yeah, you.
I mean, I, I said to Karen and I said to Graham, when I joined the program, I said, this has to go to the trustees, but it's up to you to make the decision. And we follow the guidelines of the park closes at nine o'clock. You know, we will have to have a commission member go down, because it's a Saturday night, to lock the gates and lock the bathrooms. It could be a secu, a safety issue because there is really no night lighting. I mean, there's a reason it closes at nine o'clock. A lot of places say dusk to dawn because of that. So there, it's very limited lighting. I mean, there are some lights underneath the pavilion itself.
We're gonna just put Christmas lights underneath.
Christmas lights under the tent, there's gotta be a tent there, but.
Okay, so officially, the park closes at nine o'clock, correct?
Correct.
It, right. And at nine o'clock, you would expect to lock up the building and lock the gates. Lock up the buildings, the restaurants, and, and the gates. And there can be no mechanical amplification sound at the site. So it seems to me, Karen, that we, this won't be voted on. But it seems that the, as if, if our regulations are fairly clear, that the park closes at nine o'clock. So I'll ask for trustee, trustee's opinion, tweets?
I mean, I, I do understand that it does set a precedent. I haven't, I haven't thought about that in terms of future requests for things like, like this. The staffing that has to go down after, if this were to be approved. This is a tough one. Question for you, I know you said you were starting at four because getting family and then such. Is there any possibility of trying to start a little bit earlier so you have a little bit more time or is that not?
I have to find a catering company and see if they can come earlier.
Right.
You know, we've been sat with them for like two months or an half, so they haven't. We don't need any extra people. They need to come and lock it up at nine, they can lock it up at nine. I mean, so, I mean, people are out there playing and on the, in the park after nine, it is play there. I mean, it's not like it's a hard task. Privately.
It does say.
I know.
The park near the park.
It also says no dogs can walk in there and they will let their dogs run out of there. So there's all sorts of little. Quirky things that people don't follow them. It's just gonna be like an hour, maybe an hour or two, that's it.
So what say your tweets?
Are you asking for my vote now or are you?
It's this weekend, correct?
Yeah, Saturday. Karen, how many people are you expecting? I think we're up to like eighty-five, something like that.
I think the application said a hundred.
Yeah, I mean, not everybody is at the park. And obviously, all those people aren't gonna be there. It's just the people that are coming from out of town. They're staying at the spoon, whatever it's called now, Old Town Hotel. So it's just gonna be, you know, half a dozen, dozen people that are staying locally. It's not gonna be a hundred people for my.
And what happens when, when it closes, how, when you close the gate? Like, how would you exit if it's closed?
Well, the, the gates, the gates be open for people to bring in their things. Huge, there are huge double gates, you know, with Mack truck directly back there. There is a side gate that people can walk in and out of. The people, as I said, really people end up in a time.
Right. So there's not, it's not like locked per se, it's.
It's a pedestrian?
The pedestrian gate is not locked.
Got it.
It's the, you know, like as you said, you have. It's the, you know, like as you said, you have caterers coming and stuff, so you unlock the gate so you can set up, she has a tent, she has ten people coming the day before to set up the tent, the gate has to be unlocked for that. On Monday, when the tent people come, that's what, I, when someone has to get on, like, unlock the gate and then walk back out, you don't want everybody driving in and out of there, or it would be, so.
I mean, if we did our deposit and paid for the whole four days because the tent company can't come on Sunday, so that makes sense.
Right, oh, no, but no one, they can't have it on Sunday.
We know that.
They always can't unlock it, they take time to stop.
And the caterers will, would be cleared out earlier than nine?
Yeah, yeah, once the stuff is over, right.
So it's just the tent and maybe twelve to fifteen people?
Yeah, I, I mean, I can't say exactly how many people will stay, there are people that are going to drive home, they're gonna have children and not to stay there that late, um, some people will stay, it's available, it's just a place to sit and hang out after the back.
Uh, oh, I need a second today, so.
Okay.
Wait a minute. If you wanna canvass the other others.
Have there been any, have there been any other, um, ticketed events that have gone later?
Ticketed?
Yeah.
We've never had anyone stay after. Most, as a, like a preparal, excuse me, it was, um, like the preparal party, they're there until seven thirty. Other events that would care.
Well, the lights are coming, it's just on October first here every year, we never, by nine o'clock, people were shut down.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might, might, well, again, there's no lighting, so people would want to.
That, that's, that's the only concern that I have is, is no lighting, um, well, not the only concern, that's, that is a concern, the, the precedent of, of staying open later is a concern that I have as well, I, it's, I mean, it's, I hate, it's, I hate to be the, the, um, the bummer here, but I, I feel worried about, you know, how we say, how, if we were to say yes to one, how we would be able to, to logically say no to anybody else, and I, I'm feeling like, um, I hate to be the party pooper, but that's, that's the concern, the concern is precedent.
Uh, okay, so, um, yeah, I, I think the precedent setting is, is, is not the move, and if, and I hope that there's some way that, that I'll possible to get the caterers or to move it up an hour, I know that's not, it's not a small thing to ask, I totally understand, and I know that it's a big party, and so, I'm sorry, but I think if the park closes at nine, the park closes at nine.
Thank you, Fram.
Oh, yeah, I agree with Tweeps, I mean, we need to lock up the bathroom, we need to lock the place up, I mean, if, if there is ten people sitting around, that, I mean, you know, presidents wouldn't do that, but, I mean, the park typically closes at nine, so that's, or that the bathroom should be closed, and I don't see extending it.
Thank you, Fram. Kathleen?
Um, I, do you want me to restate?
Uh, stop it, and I.
Yeah, I, I, I agree.
Okay, uh, so I would agree, so, um, the party has to stop at nine o'clock. Thank you, Kathleen, thank you.
Baseball field, that's it. Not familiar?
Baseball field's not recording.
Thank you, Karen, for expressing your, your problem. Thank you, Ruth Ann. Okay, the next topic on the agenda is a resolution setting rate and time for public hearing on proposal of laws amending chapter seventy-six, one oh four, one eleven, and one thirty-four, and adding chapter one twenty-four to the village code. So, I make a motion to adopt this resolution.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Fram. Whereas the Board of Trustees, the Village Code speaks in respect of the co, village code by amending chapter seventy-six noise, one oh four signs of flappers, one eleven supplementation of plan, one thirty-four zoning, and adding chapter one twenty-four safe, unsafe buildings, whereas the village board wishes to set a time and place for public hearing to consider amending chapters seventy-six, one oh four, one eleven, and one twenty-four, and add, oh, Jeff, that should be one thirty-four, whereas, it should say chapter seventy-six, one oh four, one eleven, and one thirty-four, and adding chapter one twenty-four. Now, therefore, it's hereby resolved that the village board determines, hereby determines that it will be the lead agency with respect to the review of the proposal below the project in accord with New York State Environmental Quality Review Act and Part Six of machine of the regulations if remain sacred, since there are no other agencies that they have had the authority to approve the project and let it be further resolved, that a public hearing will be held by the village board in order to receive comments, suggests, and suggestions regarding the proposed amendment to the above list chapters, and to receive any comments concerning the potential adverse environmental impacts of the proposed list legislation in accord with secret, on Tuesday, September seventh, twenty twenty-one, at six thirty at Village Hall, eighty-five Main Street, Paul Springs, New York, and it is further resolved that the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause said public notice of said hearing to be given after body trial law.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Marie, you skipped over an agenda item?
Sorry?
You skipped over?
I did.
An item, the discussion on short-term rental fees?
Oh, I, I did, I told them. That's why I skipped them all.
It's a good chat.
Okay, so, the short-term rental fees that were originally suggested was a fifty-dollar application fee, a two hundred and fifty dollar fee for hosted and unhosted, and a one hundred dollar fee for one-time, um, permits. Subsequent to that, there was conversation about increasing the fee, so that's the discussion on the table, should the fee for fees be increased from fifty dollars for the application, one hundred for the short, one-time permit, and then two fifty for the hosted and unhosted permit? Kathleen?
Well, I think if we're, um. Fifty for, fifty for hosted, two fifty for unhosted, right?
No, fifty for the application.
Oh, sorry.
Regardless of the type, and then the permitted, one hundred for one-time, two fifty for hosted and unhosted.
Oh, okay, same for hosted and unhosted. If we are, if we are limiting, which we are, under the law, limiting the number of nights that can be rented, um, we are, we are limiting the income on the property as well, whether it's hosted or unhosted.
By virtue of that.
By virtue of the fact that they can, right, if someone were able to rent for, I don't know, half the year, right, they're gonna have more income than, than they are limited, so it seems to me to be reasonable to keep the permit fee lower since we are limiting income capacity.
Fram?
Well, I would say leave them as they are for this time around, but, but first year run through and then, uh, see if someone wants to change, yeah, I'm fine with running through this, I know it's been up and down, but I'm fine with doing it as they are.
Tweeps? I agree with, uh, Fram and Kathleen on this one. Okay, so, we will keep the fees at fifty, one hundred for one-time, sorry, applications are fifty, uh, one hundred for one-time, and two fifty for hosted and unhosted. So, do we need to vote? Hold on.
Yes, sir.
Sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Do you, shall we vote?
Sure.
So, all those in favor? Aye?
I'll put the state in first.
Hold that one.
Aye!
For fifty, oh, oh, for a fifty-dollar application fee, a one hundred dollar permit fee for one-time, short-term rentals, and a two hundred and fifty dollar fee for hosted and unhosted short-term rentals.
Aye!
Aye, 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 okay.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye. Come on, why, you haven't fun yet? Jeff, I, I thought, um, the, um, hydrant flush cannot go on the village website?
Yes.
You probably are already planning to do that. Sorry, thank you. Okay, chapter one thirty-four.
Before we move into code discussion, may I add a, um, a comment related to the discussion of the park?
Of the?
Of the, keeping the park, what, not to extend the open hours of the park for the party.
Oh.
I, I think one of the things that's important to, to note is that it is a residential street, and there's residences, residences across the street from the park, um, and I, I think that's an important consideration of, of keeping folks in the park after, in addition to lighting and safety concerns.
Thank you. Okay, so one thirty-four, which is the whole reason we started the, the special board, sorry, the Code of State Committee in two thousand fifteen, was to address the issues raised by the Department of State about the local law, so, uh, there had been errors on my part with descriptions of the minimum, minns and maxes for, um, B four, that has been corrected. So you will see in one thirty-four fifteen that there is a, uh, description of the minimum and maximum, um, lot area, lot width, lot depth, all street parking, blah, 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 and if you go on further, and that is four, so, B fifteen, sorry, B four is designated medical and healthcare facility district, that is what B four is primarily about. There were originally two B four districts in the village, as everyone knows, and one of those was developed as Chestnut Ridge under a change to the zoning code. And so, if, if we look at it, uh, B four was introduced in, uh, two thousand, sorry, nineteen seventy-six. The extension for one thirty-four fifteen as a senior citizen housing was introduced in nineteen seventy-eight, and the introduction of that local law identified different minimum and maximums, and that is now identified in one thirty-four fifteen G, where the following standards in addition to, states, the following standards in addition to one thirty-four fifteen F are applicable to B four when permitted under special use permit for senior citizen housing, and then it describes a whole bunch of text, uh, conditions which were put in place to ensure the safety and well-being of senior citizens, such as, artificial lighting the ground shall provide illumination sufficient for convenience and safety of senior citizens. The project design shall be functional and shall provide for the safety, health, and general welfare of occupants of this age group, and it goes on, and then eventually in one thirty-four, just went past it, one thirty-four fifteen G fourteen, the minimum and maximum for a senior facility are described. So I believe that that addresses, uh, the, the, the problem that I introduced in one thirty-four fifteen, and if everyone is in agreement with that, which I assume you have reviewed, um, we will accept, I will accept those, or they will be accepted, Fram and I will work on that.
Yes, I understand what happened, and I understand how it should be, and I agree.
Well, yeah. Good with it.
And then the next topic of one thirty-four is, um. Sorry, it's just, one thirty-four is a big chapter, took a long time to scroll through.
Page twelve is Charlotte, please.
Sorry?
Stick page sixty-four is Charlotte's.
Oh, um, that may be the next item.
Yep, it is.
The next one is, it's before Charlotte, accessory apartments, accessory apartments are more, much more fully described and regulated in the proposed changes to chapter one thirty-four. One of the statements that you will see in the code, and here we're looking at one thirty-four oh sixty-three, or page sixty-three, is that the original, the original statement was accessory apartments shall not be used for short-term rentals. Now, accessory apartments, so this is in the section on the description of the regulations for accessory apartments, and the question is, do we want to prohibit short-term rentals in accessory apartments? This code says that an accessory apartment can only exist in the primary dwelling place, cannot exist in an accessory building, it can only be in the main house, we all are using vernacular there, so, do we want to leave in this prohibition for short-term rentals in the main house in an accessory apartment?
So in other words, if, if you were to remove that, it would, uh, no longer be allowable to use an apartment that is internal to the primary structure, right, not a separate building?
No, if it were to remove this, it would allow a short-term rental to be placed in the primary building in an accessory apartment.
Okay, we said the same thing in a different way.
And in the difference, I'm sorry, in, when we talked about short-term rentals, we said they were not allowed, was it accessory buildings that we said?
I believe that's what we said.
Okay, that's all, because accessory buildings are separate from accessory apartments.
Yes.
Accessory apartment is within the main building, and that, that to me is okay, uh, accessory buildings, we said no because they would have to be.
They would have to be.
CFO and all the rest of that.
Right.
So I'm fine with taking this out of one thirty-four.
Okay.
I would like to, I just want to take a fast look at the, at one thirty-five, one hundred. Okay, one hundred clearly says the one hundred dash four, accessory building cannot be used in a, in a short-term rental.
Where, where is that, Fram?
One hundred. One hundred dash four, it's number, um, H.
Well, and that, that is, that has just passed, and so this, this change that Marie is proposing is consistent with chapter one hundred.
Actually, they're talking about two different things, chapter one hundred is talking about an accessory building. This is about an accessory apartment.
But the result is that with this removal, you could have one in an accessory apartment within the primary structure, but not in a building.
Accessory building.
That is accessory, so that would makes, makes consistent chapter one thirty-four and chapter one hundred.
Right, I mean, yeah, I mean, this would be, this, there's not even, accessory apartments are not mentioned in chapter one hundred at all, only accessory buildings.
So I, that's why I have to say it's consistent.
I know what you're saying.
They are not in conflict with one another.
That's a better way to state it, yeah.
So I'm good at taking this out, accessory apartment shall not be used, so we'll remove it.
Okay, we'll remove that. The next one is Charlotte's. Currently, there is a statement that trailers, other than house trailers, such as campers or camping trailers, may be stored in, in the open on a lot, on. or camping trailers, may be stored in, in the open, on a lot, occupied in conformity with this chapter, in any district, for not more than nine months in any year. That is really not, not a very good way to write the law. I'm not criticizing who wrote this, but a better way to say that would be, for not more than nine months in any 12-month period. That is a much broader way to get across the idea that you don't want things there. So, if everyone is in, is in agreement with that, that change will be made. Tweaks?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, great. And the last, well, not the last one, we're back to parking fee in lieu.
We have to.
Fee in lieu, yes, we do, we have to. For this to get placed on the Village website, so that we can meet the requirements for a public hearing to post the materials, we'll have to resolve this. So, I think, have I, you had, if I remember correctly, you had suggested a parking impact fee as opposed to a fee in lieu of parking.
And the reason that I suggested that, I went in late and made comments, I'm sorry that you didn't get to see them earlier, the reason that I suggest that is that payments in lieu of parking are an actual planning mechanism that, that are intended to pay, a developer or business owner pays a fee to build a spot, either on, you know, off-site, but it's an actual physical spot. And I think in using the term payment in lieu of parking, it's implying that we're actually building a spot, and it's part of the confusion that people experience talking about payment in lieu of parking, because in other settings, payment in lieu of parking means that you're actually paying to build a spot elsewhere. And since what we're doing here under D is offsetting expenses related to parking control, it seems as if it's clearer to say a parking impact fee. The bigger, the bigger issue I have with this is, is one that I think should be easy to resolve, which is segregating on an income line and an expense line, the money that's actually coming in, so it's not just dumping into the general fund. If we're, if we're saying that we're collecting the money and using it to offset expenses related to parking control, I think we ought to be able to report that.
I think we, I mean, Jeff said.
And it sounds like we resolved that, right?
Jeff said he was fine with that.
And a lot of the stuff gets tracked now, it's, we just don't have it lumped together the way I think we're discussing here.
Yeah.
But, you know, signs, signage.
Yeah, exactly.
We're already tracking the expenses on that, it's just it all gets lumped together, whether it's stop signs, you know, parking signs, signs for the municipal parking lot, whatever, because it's just one general signs category. So, we need to break that out further. Same with NICO, we already have an expense line for parking enforcement agent, if we want to move that, we can do that. So, a lot of, you know, we, we are tracking parking revenue and expenses, we just don't have it lumped together and categorized the way we've been discussing, and that we can do.
And it all goes into the general fund?
Correct.
It's the charge. And it is a planning tool, not just for new buildings, not for new construction. It is for reuse of any existing structure.
Development or redevelopment, but we're not actually taking the payments, first of all, in an actual payment in lieu of parking scheme, the price is set to actually pay for a parking space, so it's, you know, twenty thousand dollars, eleven thousand dollars, whatever it is in that municipality, the cost of building an actual parking spot. We're collecting, what is it, two hundred and fifty or something?
One.
Once, right? And it's not, that's not enough to build a spot. And so, we're using the language around a mechanism that builds spots in most applications. Here, we're using it to offset costs related to parking control, which is why I'm suggesting that it be called a parking impact fee rather than a payment in lieu.
Okay. Fran, how do you feel about calling it a parking impact fee instead of fee in lieu?
For a site, I think, I think it looks really good, so I'm going to say yes, I'm not going to, you know, it's a long discussion, I like the parking impact fee, so I'm good with it.
Please?
Yes, I am good with parking.
Okay.
If I wake up in the middle of the night and think that's something wrong with it, I'll email you all in the morning. Get my internet, my internet was down all day, so I apologize, but I did not get to look at it.
It's because of the, it's because of Central Hudson, it's because of Central Hudson. Termit.
Let me tell me today, because I can pay my bill.
Oh.
I'll say I do pay my bill.
And I, that's it. Okay, variances, discussed on page, um...
73.
73. Chapter 106 specifically states that it is the responsibility of the planning board, not the CBA. B1 identifies those things that the CBA can opine on, so I think it should be removed.
The Steve Slobs reference? Pardon me? The Steve Slobs reference?
Yes, well, Chapter 106.
Right. That makes sense to me.
Okay, that's good to me, but, okay. I'm just, I'm just going to prove that.
Oh, you're so, you're so.
That was an easy one.
So, I was concerned that when, in the discussion on, on variances, there was no, there was no discussion about self-imposed hardship. And if anyone has gone through a zoning, or a request for a variance, you know that there's a very strict set of criteria that the CBA must adhere to before they can approve any variance. And one of those criteria is a self-imposed hardship, which, based upon the type of variance that is being requested, if it's a use variance, it goes one way, if it's an area variance, it goes another way. In one case, a self-imposed hardship is a fatal issue. If the, if it is determined that, that it is a self-imposed hardship, the vote has to be no. But, it wasn't mentioned here, so, and because it is such a key criteria, if you go to C, C, just, C references, New York State Village Law, Section 7-712-B.3, and 7-712-B-2, those two laws, New York State laws, articulate what, what the criteria is, including self-imposed hardship. So, it doesn't need to be included here, it is referenced by the requirement to go to use New York State Village Law.
Okay, so.
I see what you just did, yeah.
Is that, is that correct?
I, I'm guessing so.
The capital B.
Yes. So, we can clear the hardships?
Yeah.
Clear the hardships in the capital B, where it's.
Yeah, sounds, looks good.
So, this is on the September 3 public hearing, this is a public hearing.
September 3.
September 7.
Seven.
Sometime in September.
Yes, sometime, see you in September. So, that takes us through Chapter 134, and the changes will be made on Tuesday.
That's great.
So, it doesn't get us all to help? There are further chapters in the public hearing on September 7. Chapter 76, 111, 104, 124, and 124. I request that you all look at those chapters and provide me with your comments and suggestions by next Monday.
And they have, they have all been, they've all undergone previous reviews, this is a final check.
Yes, and as it turns out, as we go, it's like peeling an onion. We learn so much as we go through each of these chapters, we take that information and go back and say, oh, now I understand, makes sense. So, the, the chapters are either in the pre-hearings folder or in the clean, done, okay folder. In fact, I think only one chapter's in clean, done, okay, and I think that's 124, which is unsafe buildings and structures. All the rest, I believe, are in the pre-hearings folder, with the exception of 134, which is a file, um, yeah, 124 is in clean, done, okay, all the rest are in pre-hearings. So, by next Monday.
So, we can just work through a group of what I'm suggesting?
Yeah, I've, I've been doing, unless it's formatting, if it's formatting, I just edit it, if it, you know, like if it's in, blah, 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 blah. But if there's a wording change, I've been noting it, I would suggest.
While we're together, I'm going to look quickly, because.
Sorry?
While we're together, I want to make sure I have access, because some of the, um...
For a fee?
A fee or a payment in lieu?
A small.
Not a waiver.
Two hundred and fifty dollars, I'll take it.
Okay.
76 is noise, right?
Yep.
76 is noise, talks about decibels. Okay, so, you were, you were going to find that article in the AARP.
I do have it at home, yes.
Because I thought it was incredibly helpful to equate, you know, slamming a front door with.
Right.
Yeah. Dropping a shoe.
So, so, Marie and Fran, whoever grants this, right now, I don't have edit access to suggest?
I also don't.
Okay, so on those chapters, we'll, we'll have to edit her again, if you want them to send it to me.
Could you, yeah.
Don't edit in the document?
Yeah, send me whatever comes in.
Okay.
Okay, sweet.
At this point. I'm a little afraid of messing up headings, et cetera.
I just want to say, but yes, that's, that's the concern.
Whoa, no, I'm hugely concerned about it, I don't want to be responsible for that.
Okay, so, that brings us to the last few items on the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve the bill's batch number 6146, in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and two dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Any discussion?
No. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from July 14.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
But wait a minute, was I at July 14? I was not, I can't vote on that one. I'm not thinking.
It's, yeah, you were there.
You were over.
That was best deal day.
Yes, you were there, it was best deal day. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from July 15.
Second.
I was there too.
Any comment?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions from the public? Jeff?
Oh, wait, not the public.
There'll be a meeting next Tuesday to 17 for garbage, parking, the share, the sharing of the tax revenue that Bob Flaherty brought up tonight, there will not be a meeting on the 24th.
So, the workshop goes away on the 24th?
But there's the potential to add one on the 31st.
No.
Which is the fifth Thursday, fifth Tuesday of the month.
I won't be here on the 31st.
You can't, neither one of you can?
I will not be here on the 31st.
I'm here, we're back on the 24th.
Well, the 31st was not a scheduled meeting, anyway, the, the one issue we will have is going that long without paying bills.
Yeah, it's bills.
Yeah.
And what about if we have comments from the public hearing this Thursday night?
Yeah, this week.
That's, I mean, if we have comments from the public hearing Thursday night, we're going to need to address them.
Yeah.
Sooner or.
Yeah, we're, we're going to need another meeting.
I'm sorry, can't be here on the 31st, and I could probably get here later.
I can be for other ones, so whatever works, I will, I will be done.
So, keep the 24th?
Keep the 24th.
I think we have to.
We will probably know more if Thursday night.
Thursday night, we'll know better. We know that we have at least one, one comment.
And with bills, you, you need, bills aren't normally controversial, right, you need a quorum, so if there were, worst-case scenario, someone was with Fran and.
Well, if Fran and Tweaks aren't here, we can't do bills.
But Dave would be here, because you and David would be.
Oh, no, you're, you're on the audit committee, never mind. Right.
So, it needs to be the 34th.
I mean, I can be here the day before, or the day after, or whatever, I just.
Is everybody good with the 24th?
Yeah.
I'm good with the 24th, last I looked.
I'm not asking if everybody wants to be good for the 24th, but.
Yes, you spiritually broken down, yes. I have no choice, yes. Sorry, the 24th.
All right, so do the 17th and 24th.
I don't need it this instant, but do you have the dates for the process for the one-time short-term rental application process? I have the dates for the hosted and unhosted.
Yeah, it's, it's the 15th and the 15th, I just shut down. Do you have a copy?
Uh, I'm not, I may have to open it again, because I have the driver.
Yeah, I did, I, I just opened it.
Got it?
Yeah.
Rabies.
Bear with me, rabies.
Well, you can just send it to me tomorrow morning, it's fine.
We have that special calendar here.
Yeah, for 21.
Wait a second. Okay. The Village will advertise in the pavement record for short-term rental permit applications no later than September 1, 2020, 2021. Applications will be accepted from September 15 to October 15, 2021. During the period from November, from October 15 to November 15, all applications will be verified. If any of the application information cannot be verified, the person who submitted the application will be notified that their application is not yet considered properly completed. That person will be able to correct their application and/or correct the conditions prior to November 15, 2021. If the application and, and/or conditions are not corrected by November 15, 2021, the application will not be eligible for the public lottery held in 2021. The applications for the random public lottery draw will begin on November 16, 2021.
Are the one-time rentals that part of the lottery?
Uh, no, no, they're, they're going to get approved.
So, it doesn't apply?
Right. They get approved once, they will get their permit once they've gone through the verification process.
So, they're, the dates are the same then, for the one-time rentals as for the hosted and unhosted?
In 2021.
Yes.
But in other years, there are two dates for one time.
I just want it for 21.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and it's really no longer a one-time rental, right, because it could be two one-way rentals.
It could be two ways.
We didn't want to change the way we.
Or is it still, or is it one permit?
It's one permit.
Even if you split it, it would be one permit, right?
Okay, so I make a motion to adjourn. Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, all.